Time is seven o'clock and we'll call to order July twenty-second, two thousand nineteen, city council meeting. Roll call please.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mrs. Keller?
Here.
Mr. Brownie?
Here.
Mr. Rohr?
Here.
Mr. Hellinger?
Here.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Here.
Mayor Riggle?
Here. Tonight's invocation will be led by Nicole Gonsi of the Sonic Center for Delaware County, followed by the Pledge of Legions. If you'll all please stand. But before you lead the prayer, I'm going to ask for a moment of silence. Our community lost a wonderful man, Don Woods, over the weekend. He served as mayor here, I think about six years, Lee, and he was also a county commissioner and he truly, truly loved this community, this city, this county. He was a wonderful veteran. I had the honor to take him to Washington DC last year. He's just an outstanding person, so if we could have a moment of silence first, please. Thank you.
Okay, sure. So tonight, I thought I would open with a very gentle verse of the Quran in English and it speaks to us all. It says, "Good and evil deeds are not equal. Repel evil deeds with what are good; then you will see that the one who was once your enemy has become your best friend." And in that spirit, our invocation is, "Oh Lord, unite our community around principles of justice, peace, love, and faith. Place peace and love in our hearts for the diversity that makes us so beautiful. Oh Lord most strong, give us the strength to protect and care for our neighbors and then remove prejudice from our hearts. Enable us to love our brothers and sisters of all faiths and of no faith. Lord most merciful, allow us to show kindness to those who find themselves in need, protect us from evil, inspire and guide us in defending those who are most vulnerable in our community. Lord, give us our government vision and wisdom as they take decisions affecting peace in our community. Lord our sustainer, allow us to care for our environment and sustain this world for future generations. And Lord most merciful, most generous, please give us the patience to continue to learn from one another and work towards a more peaceful and kind world. Make our hearts generous so that we may treat others as we wish to be treated ourselves. Help us to share that which we have with others for your sake alone. Strengthen us, love us, and be kind to us all. Amen."
Thank you very much.
Pledge of Legions.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Number four is the approval of the motion summary of the regular meeting of council held July eighth, two thousand nineteen, as recorded and transcribed. What is the wish of council?
Move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Brownie. Second by Mr. Schaefer. It's been awhile. Roll call please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Brownie?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes, motion carries. Item five is the consent agenda. If you'll please read this one for the record.
Item A, acceptance of the motion summary of the Board of Zoning Appeal Meeting held on April tenth, two thousand nineteen, as recorded and transcribed. Item B, acceptance of the motion summary of the Planning Commission Meeting held on June fifth, two thousand nineteen, as recorded and transcribed. Item C, resolution number nineteen dash thirty-two, a resolution authorizing the city manager to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission, OPWC, Local Transportation Improvement, LTIP, Grant Program Round Thirty-four and to execute contracts as required for the Bell Avenue resurfacing and West Williams Street, US thirty-six Base Repair Project. Item D, resolution number nineteen dash thirty-three, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a cooperation agreement with Delaware County for an application to the Ohio Public Works Commission, OPWC, for the pavement resurfacing and rehabilitation of Bell Avenue and West Williams Street, Round Thirty-four Application.
Thank you.
Move for approval of the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Keller, second by Mr. Schaefer. Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Brownie?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes, motion carries. Item six is time set aside for letters, petitions, and public comments for anything that's not on tonight's agenda. If you'd like to come forward to the microphone and then you'll give us your name and address for the record, please.
Hong Nguyen, N-G-U-Y-E-N, one-two-eight Bridgeport Way. My name is Hong Nguyen. I grew up in Delaware and graduated at the Delaware Hayes High School and went to the Ohio State University and got my degree in ecology. I remain here in Delaware to save money and obtain a higher education, my profession. As a first-generation Delawarean, I like to see my town improve. On our website, it states hometown living with modern spirit. And I agree, we have modernized greatly, but I feel we lost our folksy way of life. We're ignoring the generation Delawareans who lived and work here, the people who worked in farms and factories. I like us to remain our folksy way like Prospect, Mansfield, and Radnor. My father, Liam Nguyen, came here from Vietnam to work at a bus factory called Flexible here in Delaware. And when the bus factory sold off, my father decided to remain here in the safe and family-friendly town in Delaware, Ohio. I wish I can turn back time to redo Polaris, Oland, Tangier area because I remember driving from Delaware to Columbus to visit my relatives and see trees and farm fields. I want Delaware to remain a quaint town with a balance of nature and commercialism and I hope it remains here for generations to come. I've got five things, hopefully under ten minutes, about my town, Delaware. Fireworks, it was spectacular, but I'm concerned about people's playing their personal music. First Fridays, local taxes, energy concern for our town. I suggest solar, wind power to prevent brownouts and blackouts. And a memoriam to Flynn Cannon, a resident who lived here and passed away this winter, and a plea for affordable housing. Fireworks, I loved it. It's been years since I've seen fireworks as a kid here in Delaware. I remember it was exciting because they were one by one, you never know what'd sparkle or be a dud. And this year was spectacular, but I suggest training police and volunteers to encourage people to refrain from playing their personal music. I suggest police and volunteers to explain with humor and tact. One way is to say, hey, can you listen to your music with earbuds? Or another, can you refrain from listening for one day and just enjoy a family moment? Because I suggest welcome local artists to play while people wait and do dance and street performances. That's what I saw when I was in the city of Boston for Independence Day. The issue was someone was playing rap song with the N-word. There were people playing with their music while we watched fireworks and I asked them that I wish I could play my Vietnamese music or country music, but I respect the people around me who want to enjoy the booming sound of the fireworks. Because as the national anthem goes, as the rocket's red glare and bomb bursting in air, I want to remember that moment on Independence Day. I want to remember the sacrifice our founding fathers and other American people, especially soldiers from past to present. I have the right of silence. I would risk my life and be a martyr in this town, so that's how serious I am with this issue. First Fridays, US leaders may know who run the First Fridays event, but I would like to see more local people selling their products. I wonder if they can set three booths aside for Delaware to sell their wares, someone from First Friday or I can make the wares look professional. When I first was an unpaid board member for the Bridges Out of Poverty, there were local Delaware residents that were excited to sell their bracelets that they homemade, vegetables and, you know, recipes. And at First Fridays in Delaware Open Market, twenty dollars matter to people. It can pay their water bills, put food on the table, et cetera. I admit, it's been awhile since I stroll down the Delaware Open Market. The time is not convenient for me, but I feel while we're supporting people outside of Delaware, we're not supporting our local neighbors. And so, third issue with local taxes, we have an issue where we're finding people when they don't realize they have to pay local taxes and they were here in Delaware and they work here and it's already deducted in their paychecks. I was in that situation for one year. I did not work and went to school and I was fined a hundred twenty-seven dollars for not declaring my taxes at zero. I don't have to declare for federal nor state, but I do need to declare here in Delaware. I ask to look into this problem and make it fair. It's taking away people's time. People are going to court to explain why they didn't pay their local taxes and some retired people are afraid to speak up since they have moved and didn't declare any money. Please resolve this fairly. Fourth, energy concern. I wish we become more eco-friendly town. I hope to work with businesses to encourage more sustainable products. In the meantime, I hope we look into solar and wind energy to power public buildings such as the city hall and libraries and local parks. So I hope we have some money in the future. So last is I'm saddened to hear Flynn Cannon, the person who evicted over winter, died in our town cold and alone. I wish we have homeless shelter or affordable housing for Delaware. I knew this person personally and I wish I could help sooner. I wish I could delve more into these topics, but I know I'm taking your time. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience that would like to come forward at this time? Seeing none, we'll close the public comments. Committee reports?
I have none.
Mrs. Keller?
I have none.
I have none.
I have none.
Nothing.
Gosh, we're lazy, aren't we? No, just kidding. At this time, would you like to introduce?
Yes, I have a special guest here tonight. Her name is Allison Merkel. Allison can stand, please. Allison is a master's student at Wright State University. She currently works for the city of Dayton in their courts department and she's interested in a career in local government. And she's part of the job career shadowing program that Wright State offers and they paired her with my office for tonight's council meeting and all day tomorrow. So she'll be getting kind of a day in the life of the city manager's office, working with myself and Kyle. So welcome Allison. I know she's yet to be introduced and no quizzes at the end of the meeting.
Okay, tomorrow. Kyle, welcome to your first meeting today.
Thank you. Glad to be here.
Item eight is presentation. We're going to have an update from the Delaware General Health District. I'm Sheila Hiddleston.
Good evening, mayor and council and guests, staff. Sheila Hiddleston, your health commissioner, just stopping by to give you a little bit of an update on what's going on in the district. And of course, when I talk about the district, it's not our building, it is the community that we serve. So first off, I wanted to start off, and I may have already said this, but I can't remember, and so you know how that goes, right? I wanted to say thank you to the council for all of the work and the energy and the effort that you did with the parks in order to make them smoke-free. I cannot express to you how wonderful it is that now our children can go to those parks and not have to worry about the secondhand smoke. So just wanted to personally say thank you to all of that. I know it was not an easy thing. I know there is always a lot of concern about individual rights, which of course we all need to be concerned about, but I really do appreciate at the end of the day that you did go smoke-free. Wanted to give you a little update on our building. As you're all aware, we did purchase the property down on South Sandusky, the property that's next to Country Club Nursing Home and lots of people in the community fondly, I hope, I don't really know, refer to as the Leroy Jenkins property. We are in the middle of negotiations for a contract with our architect, designer, builder that should be finalized by the end of this month and then I should be able to share with you who that's going to be. We're very, very excited. We had excellent proposals submitted to us. We have to also go through the request for qualifications, just like you do. We had seven proposals submitted and we did select one, so we've got the two in the background if we can't get negotiations taken care of, but I'm real hopeful. We also did have a community meeting. We invited the seventy-five neighbors that live in that general area just to kind of introduce ourselves to the community, let them know who we were, what our plans were, hear any major concerns, and I would share with you that they didn't really have any major concerns. Actually seemed to be very happy that we were going to be the people who were going to live there. We invited seventy-five households. We had about fifteen people show up and then we've received probably in the next few days afterwards, five or six telephone calls. One lady said, "Thank you very much for mowing the grass. It's been mowed more since you all owned it than it's been mowed in the many, many years prior when," I think before the city took care of it, but prior to that. We are tearing down the old fence that's there. I guess there's a lot of the fence that's pretty damaged, so we're taking care of that already. And then, like I said, by the end of this month, we hope to have actually public, we can tell you who our person's going to be, and then we'll begin very shortly thereafter working with the city as far as any special zoning, variances, and all of those kinds of things. But very, very excited. We hope to break ground in the spring of next year and then hopefully everything will go according to plan and we'll be moving in in the spring of two thousand twenty-one. So our buildings will be for sale if anybody's interested. I'm not really advertising for that, but we are obviously going to be selling our buildings, so we're beginning to look at that issue as well. You may have received the overdose death report from Travis in the last month or so, so I just wanted to kind of bring you up to speed on that. We do have a community group that gets together to talk kind of about opiates and opioid deaths and then also the fentanyl issue. We had twenty-seven overdose deaths in two thousand seventeen and twenty-seven also in two thousand eighteen. Year-to-date, this year, we've had eight. Now you might think, well, it's the end of July, is that really a woo-hoo? Is that good? We don't really know that yet because you all may be aware that the coroner has up to six months to finalize all of those death certificates. So we're waiting to see. I mean, we're hopeful, but that eight may or may not really be the actual number by the end of the day. We did decide at the last opiate update meeting that we will continue to keep people up to date, but primarily through email. It was felt at the meeting that a lot of folks can get the information that we're trying to share through mental health and through us. On our websites, we have a huge listserv that we're sending information out, but at any point you all are interested in something specific related to overdoses, Deanna Brant and myself would be happy to come and talk about those things. You may, or you're all aware, I know, that the governor signed the biennium budget and you may or may not be aware that there was the Tobacco Twenty-One was in there and it did not get out. We watched it in public health very carefully because it was in and then it was out and then it was in and it was out. It is in. We don't really know yet what those rules and what that enforcement's going to look like, but we will be working, we, my association, the Association of Ohio Health Commissioners, we will be working with the Ohio Department of Health about what those rules and things look like. I thought I would share just a couple of things and I won't go over my whole entire list, but I just wanted to share with you the reason why this is important for our youth. A lot of our students who start smoking early in that thirteen, twelve to sixteen years, they are getting their cigarettes from their older, maybe siblings or classmates that are eighteen, but they're still in school. And so that's one of the reasons that this is important, that we do know that this can decrease the number of youth that begin smoking if they don't have as easy access to the cigarettes. So that's why, from a public health standpoint, and in our youth assessment, which all of those results are on our website, and I believe that last year when we finished that, we did survey over ten thousand middle and high school children in Delaware County. So we have some really good data and we do know that fourteen percent of the students who are smoking, I'm sorry, sixteen percent of middle school students who are smoking got those from someone else who gave them to them and either they gave them dollars to buy them or they just borrowed them from them. We also know that the vaping, that is also going to be included in the T21. That's really very important. We had forty-nine percent of the children that are vaping borrowed it from someone else and the nine percent of those actually gave money to someone older to buy them for you. We know that we have about four percent of our fourteen to sixteen-year-olds that are actually smoking. And you might think, well, that's not very many, but it's four hundred kids. That's really way too many kids to be smoking at that age. And then seven percent of that, once they're over seventeen. So those numbers are also pretty high for the vaping. We have ten percent of our fourteen to sixteen-year-olds that are using the vaping products and twenty percent of our children seventeen and up. So just a few reasons why this really is important to public health, I don't want to get into. I know people have varying opinions about whether T21 is a good thing or not, but from the health of our community standpoint, it is really very important. And then lastly, I just thought I would share that we are continuing to do surveillance for mosquito-borne illnesses. We have not had any positive pools for West Nile virus in the pools. We have had one, one of our residents did have West Nile virus and we did do the fogging and the canvassing of that neighborhood. It was not in Delaware City, otherwise, mayor, you and Tom would have known. We always try to let our partners know when we're going to be out and about to do that. So I think that those are my updates. I also brought something for Tom. One of the things we're going to try this year for all of our political subdivision partners is if you would like us to come and do a flu shot prior to one of your meetings, a flu shot clinic prior to one of your meetings in September or November, and that would be for all of you, your staff, any of your residents that come. I'm going to leave Tom some information about that and we're happy to come and do that. We will not charge you anything to do that. We will bill insurances, of course, if someone gets a flu shot, but our board does allow us to take that fee down to zero if someone doesn't have insurance. Because again, as your health department, we just want to see people protected. And then lastly, I would just share, you're all aware that there is a huge measles outbreak going around across the state. And your health department, we've been in incident command for about a month and a half. We are completely prepared if we get a case here, excuse me, here in Delaware to set up clinics immediately. We have press releases ready to go out. And so far, even though I can't, I will share with you, we've had some scares, we haven't actually had a positive measles yet in the county. So the ones that we've been investigating did not come to fruition to actually be a case. So that's the good news. The other good news is we're ready when, if, when and if it happens. And then I'd be happy to entertain any questions that any of you have or anything that's come up? Any questions?
I was driving through a community the other day and right now I can't even remember where I was. I think I was in Dublin. They put signs out when they're fogging.
We do that as well.
You do that? Okay. Just on the main drags, I noticed them, so.
So wherever we're going to be fogging, our staff the day before go out and put those signs. And then we also do the press releases, so if someone doesn't want us to fog in their area, we can turn off the machine. Now realistically, I mean, obviously, just because we turn it off doesn't mean it ever gets to those other places, but we do honor that request if we have it. One of the questions that we also get always asked about with fogging is what about the bees? People get very concerned. That's the reason that we do fog after dark, because bees go into their hives and so they wouldn't be affected by the pesticide.
Unfortunately, I've never seen the sign-ups in the press releases, but I guess I've never noticed the signs.
I think, I'm trying to remember, mayor, I think for Delaware, we've maybe only, since I've been here, maybe only fogged twice. And I think it was in the southern part of Delaware, the eastern, east, southern part.
That's why I didn't see it.
Yeah. I don't believe, I don't know where you live, but I believe, yes, I don't believe since I've lived here in six and a half years that we've had any in that area. Anything else?
Any other questions?
I have one.
Yes.
I just have a question about what the health department is doing about the tics and tick awareness and Lyme disease in our community.
Yes, Ms. Keller, I know that that is of a concern to you and we continue to put that information out there. In fact, I just received a letter today or an email today from Alan Rothenmel from Sunberry that they've had some residents complaining about some of the paths that are out there. So we have lots of information that we're giving out as we go around. Travis should have brought you some tick information at the beginning of the season and continue to have that out on all of our social media and things. I don't know that I've really, I haven't really read anything that says they're more or less this year. I know that they're always around and we just all need to be very vigilant. And we do have the tick cards still that we can make sure that Tom has some if you want to leave some by, like your utilities where people are paying those, we're happy to give you those to get out. And it describes the various different kinds of ticks. It also is, it's got a little divot that actually helps to remove a tick if you needed to do that. And then we're reminding everyone, if you do actually remove a tick from your person that is attached, we recommend that you put that in a baggie, you put the date and the time and put it in your freezer. That way, if later on you do have an illness and your physician might say, well, do you remember, did you get stuck, you know, bit by a tick? You could take that to them and then could identify, might help them to narrow down what the disease would be.
Or they could also send it immediately after they've removed it to like a tick encounter group, pay fifty dollars and that group can tell them right away if that tick is carrying any diseases.
A tick encounter group?
Yes, it's called tickencounter.org. I removed a tick from my son and paid fifty dollars to have it tested. They were able to get back to me within just a couple of days to say, this is how long the tick had been attached, this is the type of tick, it tested negative for all of these diseases, which can be a huge relief because then you know that you don't need to worry about that.
Absolutely.
One of the things that I spoke with Jackie Walker about before she retired was getting more signage up in our parks and on our trails. This year, my mom was at a baseball game, we were just all sitting in the grass on lawn chairs. When she got home, she had a tick attached to her leg. So it can happen anywhere, not just in tall grass. And just people trying to increase the awareness that any time that you're outside, a tick check when you come inside is important. And so I'd love to just get more signs in our parks that say, you know, not just in the, on the trails and things, but at the baseball fields and things, because I've been hearing a lot of that.
We are happy to do that if they're yours and you want us to. I know we've been working with preservation parks for several years to try to get those out at all of their parks, but if they belong to you and you want us to help you to do that, we are happy to do that.
I know that was something we were, you know, in the process of working on, just getting checked for ticks.
But thank you for the information for the tick encounter. I've never heard of that group. I didn't know you could do that. That's why we just recommend that you keep it just in case, but that's good information. I'll make sure Tracy gets that out there.
Okay, thank you.
Is it a reliable lab? I mean, you feel confident with it?
It is. It's through a university. I think it's the University of Massachusetts. Don't quote me on that exactly, but it is, and it's, it's through research that they're doing also to map diseases that ticks carry and they're trying to keep track of that.
All right. Well, as long as we can verify the source, we'll have her put that out on our social. The other thing we can do for you all, I know you all have a website and I know we are one of your links, but if you wanted a specific link to information about tics, we could give you that as well.
Okay.
If you want something like that.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Anything else? All right. Well, you all know how to get in touch with me if you need anything. Just down the street and pretty soon I'll be down the street that way.
Right. I'm hoping for sooner than the spring of twenty-one, but my board member tells me I'm being too old. Thank you very much for the update.
Okay, item nine on the agenda is director update. Today we have Sean Hughes, Economic Development Director.
Good evening, mayor, members of council. Thank you for allowing me to come and update you on economic development activity this year. If I were to give our update a theme, it would be continued evolution. I think one of the things that we've seen as a community is our workforce has changed and our efforts of trying to recruit companies and keep and grow companies have changed. I think we've responded to that and those efforts are growing. You know, obviously, we don't see large-scale office projects like you would if you're a two-seventy community, but we do add those office projects often here and have to learn how to celebrate even the smallest projects so that that will help us recruit even more. All right. So on the business attraction side for project management, we're currently at two hundred and twenty-seven projects for the year. That's a ten percent increase over the same point in time last year. So we do continue to grow in our work. Twenty-six percent of those are on the office side. If we go back a few years, that wouldn't even been ten percent of our efforts. So I'm really thrilled that we're starting to shift more towards that direction. That is serving our resident workforce greatly. There is a continued and increased desire for renovated office space in the city, especially to serve these technical business services and creative service companies that have been looking at our city. An example of that is the company that's looking over, on the second floor of Zach Price's building. So, you know, software company that really likes the walkability of our downtown. So, you know, software company that, that really likes the walkability of our downtown. It's not a huge number of jobs, but the payroll is incredible. 98% of our projects, however, this year are seeking buildings. That, that's like a pendulum. Every year, it shifts back and forth and as you talk to developers and whatnot, they see it too. It's kind of a weird thing because it makes investments very risky. You'll invest in something one year and the next year that changes greatly and all of a sudden your investment doesn't look so good. So, we have to very carefully watch that. But for instance, this year, if you're especially looking on the R&amp;D industrial side, 50,000 square foot is a typical building that a company's looking for. That goes all the way up to 150,000 square foot and as small as 5,000 square foot. But, pretty much all projects this year are looking on the building side. That could change as they see that there's very little inventory in central Ohio and Ohio in general, in the country I'm hearing. Those will eventually turn into site selection projects. We're actually looking for pad-ready sites, but some of those won't. On the project management, business retention expansion side, we're up to 65 company visits by the end of June. That's, whoops, hit the button. That's consistent with last year. Forty-one of those, or 63%, have converted into projects. We're actually working on something on the expansion or retention of that company. The number one issue that we work on with companies is workforce. That is always going to be a challenge going forward. And the number, the main issues when it comes to workforce are retention, training, transportation, childcare, and workforce housing that we've discussed in the past. Continuing into project management, entrepreneurship is a continued hot topic here, especially as we shift toward more white collar jobs. Glad to say the entrepreneur center is full. On the office side, actually, they're taking what was my office and giving that away to another company, so there will actually be six tenants in the entrepreneur center, which means that the county and city folks will have to work in coworking space there if we're in that building at any time, which is perfectly fine with me. I'd rather see a company and they're using it all the time. The ED team here at the city has been taking a leadership role in establishing monthly programming in the facility and we continue to try to work with resource providers to get them on board to provide regular programming on their own to the entrepreneurs who are using the facility and those in the community who aren't. Cohatch being the later stage companies that, that we work with, not the peer startups, that has been a success story, I believe. Right now, we're actually, if I, the report I got today, we're 16 out of 20 offices full. That says 15, so we filled one more this month so far. That leaves four offices remaining. There's 79 coworking members utilizing the facility at any one time. As you, those of you who have been in there, that changes obviously. They're not there all day or sometimes they're there at two o'clock in the morning, you know? It's a fluctuating workspace. And they also are conducting regular business programming there. I've been very impressed with the level of programming that they offer our business community and the members of Cohatch, and that's actually a very strong suit of Cohatch in general. So, wins. So, if you look at the 34 successful projects that we have, and I'm not going to read all these off to you, but the tech, R&amp;D, office medical projects are leading in that. And that's mainly due to the efforts and investments we've made as a community, you as council have helped us make in regards to Cohatch, the entrepreneur center, and helping us to incentivize revitalization of buildings and whatnot for office space. That's allowed us to add more and more of these office users in our downtown area in particular and now moving over into the East Side Historic District. Transforming our local economy to provide jobs needed by our resident labor force, that's, you know, that, the story that our numbers tell completely indicate that, that we are actually responding to the citizen survey that we conducted a few years ago, that we're really trying to make sure that we're providing jobs so they're not leaving our community. Sixty-one per six, 61.6% of our new jobs are from target core, core target industries. So, we continue to fill or work towards fulfilling the needs of our residents in that regard. And we have a nearly $50,000 average annual salary on core industry jobs, which is consistent with the region. We do have 15% project to win conversion, which is actually the highest since I've been here. That double-digit number is very good to see as our work actually pans out into wins. But, it's always important for us to continue to work on inventory, being buildings and sites, pad-ready sites, so we can continue that, that effort. So, that leads me to my next slide here, site and asset development. I think Bob Lamb always actually says this, "Land is just land without infrastructure. It's not a site." And he's completely correct and we've seen that. With that being said, we continue to try to work with partners, potential partners for development of sites, especially with the Wolf Industrial and Wilgus areas of Salmo Parkway. How do we actually make smart investments in infrastructure and whatnot to turn those into something that's going to be usable by a company? All of our buildings are full, except recently, we had 160,000 square foot that's becoming available at 1076 Pittsburgh Drive. Unfortunately, NEX Transport is leaving our community because they've lost a major customer that was using that facility. So, we will be trying to fill that facility as quickly as possible, but I have to believe with what we're seeing on the lead side right now that 160,000 square foot is very desirable. And then the East Side Historic District is gaining momentum and it's an area that, as we've seen with the comp plan update, that residents are very interested in, the business community is very interested in, investors are very interested in. So, we need to continue to pay attention to that side and see, and work as city staff to put effort towards increasing the vision and the work that we're doing there. And then downtown continues to transition into much more of a mixed-use development. You're seeing very expensive apartments going into second, third floors as well as the office space that we've been talking about. And that's very exciting. So, downtown transitioning, real estate pricing, that says a lot. And I've heard this as being a negative and positive as I go through meetings, like our downtown merchants meetings and building owner meetings, but building values have increased by 437% since I got here in 2013. Sometimes success begets some negative issues and that's done a lot. It's obviously made some people some money, but it's also increased rent because, you know, a building owner is a business. They have to make money off these buildings. The only way to do that is to charge the rent that's necessary, a market-based rent to make that building turn into a value. And vacant sites are at an even higher premium as we saw with the Indus Hotel project that's been canceled. Who in a million years would have thought that a site that size would be going for $1.7 million in our downtown? But it is. So, and we continue to try to find a new user for that site as well. With that being said, I tried to keep it short and sweet. That's the end of my report. Please welcome any questions that you all have. I continue to thank you for your support as we work through these items.
Questions, comments?
Just one comment. I had a personal situation. I'm a member of Cohatch with a small business that I own. And when Sean and his team call themselves business concierge, I can highly vouch that that is absolutely the situation. I had an issue with my small business. I did not know what to do at that moment. Kelsey from the city happened to be there. Within minutes, she had me connected to a person who could answer that question for me. They said, "If Kelsey is the person who's requesting this meeting, then you can walk over right now." I was able to walk over in our downtown and get advice immediately. By five o'clock that day, I had a letter going out, taking care of my issue immediately. It really saved my business from a major crisis and that was because I happened to be at Cohatch when I said at that very moment, "I need some help that I don't know how to deal with right now." And so, that is the benefit of having a place like Cohatch and having our employees right there to be able to answer questions for people who have small businesses that may not know, "What kind of person do I need to help me with this problem right now because this has never come up before?" And so, that's a huge success story for me and I really appreciate what you're doing and how you're helping all the businesses there, keeping them in our city and giving them the help they need to thrive. So, thank you.
Thank you.
That's great.
Sean, what are you thinking that per square foot rents are in the downtown compared to some of the legacy shopping plazas that we have? How does it differ?
It's really across the board, so, you know, what we're hearing right now in downtown is still hovering at that $14 per square foot mark per annum. That's not per month, it's per annum. However, I think as you start seeing some of these latest transactions happen and the renovations that are needing to happen in some of the existing buildings, you're going to start seeing them start sliding more towards $16, $17 a square foot to make that building, you know, generate money. So, in comparison, if I were to go to a shopping plaza, say Glenwood Commons being a newer example, I'm going to be in the twenties per square foot. And that's usually not including your CAM. And some of these buildings aren't charging CAM, some of them are depending on what their configuration is. But if I'm going to a shopping center, I'm tacking on 3, 350 per square foot on top of my rent for CAM. So, I mean, if you're really looking at, as a.
CAM is an acronym, you should let it.
Yeah, it's common, I'm sorry, yeah, thank you. It's common area maintenance charge. So, it's for things like snow removal and grass maintenance and maintaining any common area portion of that building. So, I mean, downtown is still much more affordable than a shopping plaza. Now, if you're looking at a legacy plaza like, you know, the one that just sold on 23, you know, he was making deals in the sixes. You know, do a deal for 660 a square foot per annum down there, which is untouchable. I mean, you're almost in an industrial square footage rate at that point, but he was just trying to fill space so he could sell it ultimately, and he did. The Bueller's facility right now is for sale and it's nearly $7 million. When Bueller's left, they were trying to sell the building for about 2.6 million. And that's only been a few years ago, but now it's completely full and it's generating revenue, so it's, you know, it's a good investment. I haven't ran the numbers, I'm not sure 7 million is a good investment, I don't know. But, you know, it's much more now than it would have been at that point, especially with the rents that they're getting.
Any activity on the shopping center to the east out there that has so many vacant ones? Where Kings is going in.
Oh, Glenwood Commons.
Yeah, we've got so many out there that are gone.
It's a tough nut to crack. I mean, you have a developer who I don't really think ever intended to keep that shopping center. I think they thought that, you know, was going to, I'm looking at Dave because he was here at the time when it was built, I believe, and I think that, you know, the intent was you would see more, you'd see Home Depot go in and whatnot and it would be at a point where they could just turn it over, sell it. But now, I think they're really just trying to maintain it and manage it in such a way. I know they're cutting huge deals on rent. Unfortunately, a shopping center where they're charging, you know, 25, $26 a square foot though, they're trying to maintain national brands and the national brands are the ones that are struggling the most right now. You know, so the shops that are doing well on the retail side are really more your mom and shop or your local regional franchises and whatnot, not the, you know, the Hibbits and things like that that either went out to the, you know, shopping plaza, you know, Sunberry or are just closing their doors entirely because they can't compete any longer. I can't tell you how many Amazon boxes come into Cohatch every day. Your Lord. I mean, as they're doing their own deliveries now, it's just constant Amazon deliveries and that's what we're all competing with on the retail side, so.
Maybe if they can't do retail, it'd be nice to get some more restaurants on that side of town.
Absolutely.
Pretty big buildings right there, side by side. It'd be great to see something else.
I think that's a great topic of conversation for all of us in the future is, what do you do with these shopping plazas with retail not? I don't foresee it ever coming back to its full potential from a bricks and mortar side. But, are there things like they did at Tuttle Crossing that are attractive, or even Polaris? Because Polaris attracted Cohatch in to help try to reinvigorate a portion of their mall and now they're actually building apartments and whatnot into Polaris to try to make it more of a mixed-use development. But, you know, at Tuttle, they put in Scene 75, which we, we had been trying to attract into the Bueller's facility, but it's just too small and off the freeway. But, it's the biggest Scene 75, the largest indoor go-kart track in the nation. And will it help? I don't know, you have to be seen. It's still too new, they just really opened their doors, but I gotta believe it's still going to drive more people in there than a Sears, and that was failing for, has been failing for years.
Right. Just get Penn's mechanic and put them out there, okay?
I'd like to see them downtown too, but.
Just put them on the east side. We've got lots of parking out there.
Well, I think the golf, the Mystic Golf seems to be doing very well in a legacy center. So, I mean, I think family entertainment, it could be the salvation of these legacy centers, quite honestly.
Get your mechanic, make a phone call. Thank you. Anything else? Thank you very much for your update and thanks for all your work on Saturday. The car show, I appreciate it.
It was fun, it was a very hot day. We ended up with a little over 300 cars, which is half of the first year they did it, but still significantly over last year, so we're very happy with the numbers. Thank you for your support and all of council and the state staff support on the event.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Have a good evening.
Okay, moving on to item 10. Elena, if you'll please read the second reading of ordinance number 19-38.
Ordinance number 19-38, an ordinance declaring the improvement to certain parcels in the city to be a public purpose and exempt from taxation pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 5709.40B, providing for the collection and deposit of service payments and specifying the purposes for which those service payments may be expended and authorizing school compensation payments.
Mr. Hughes, you're up. You're up.
Seattle House.
Number 10.
All right, I'm back.
Madam Mayor, members of council, this is the TIF, Tax Incumbent Financing, that I spoke about the last council meeting. This is a non-school TIF, but we hope that even with, without the school portion, that we can still generate a significant amount of dollars in a 30-year time period to help us out a little bit with the point. Obviously, we all know we have to be very conservative with TIFs, but any little bit, I think, can help. And this is one that really doesn't hurt anybody.
Any questions?
It estimates about 42,000 a year?
Yes, correct. About, probably around a million in 30 years, yeah.
And really, we're talking about east side infrastructure improvements. I mean, obviously, if you have Point, you also have East Central, which is going to be a major project, so all of those projects are in need of additional dedicated revenue.
Yeah, and we try to make it broad enough that it could easily be utilized for anything beyond the Point if necessary, but yet restrictive enough so that the developer couldn't try to come in and utilize any of the funds. That cannot happen. So, they can ask, but they can't, yes.
You know, Bowtown Road is a mess. Can this be used toward that also? No?
I mean, it's broad enough that we could if that was seen as a community need. It really just has to be utilized for any infrastructure that benefits that particular project, so Bowtown obviously is one of those, you know, it's a road that obviously serves the development. You can go over and use it like on Salmo Parkway, for instance.
So, it's ready tonight or if you want to take it to another reading of the council?
One note, Madam Mayor, members of council, this does not have an emergency clause on it, so to the extent you want to keep moving it forward, it's going to be 30 days after whatever you pass it.
Make a motion to suspend the rules requiring pre-readings in ordinance 1938.
Second.
Question by Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Schaefer. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Make a motion for approval of ordinance 1938.
Second.
Question by Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Schaefer. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item 11 is the second reading of ordinance number 19-39. Elena, if you'll please read this on the record.
Ordinance number 19-39, an ordinance supplementing the 2019 appropriations ordinance in the amount of $10,000 and now authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement to participate in a regional housing strategy.
This is the second reading of an ordinance that was introduced at council's last meeting regarding a regional housing study that the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission is doing. It really ties in, I think, nicely with the work that Dave and his comprehensive steering, comprehensive plan steering committee are doing. This is the second reading of an ordinance that was introduced at council's last meeting regarding a regional housing study that the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission is doing. It really ties in, I think, nicely with the work that Dave and his Comprehensive Steering, Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee are doing. It does require supplemental appropriation of ten thousand dollars to essentially, that's our participation, plus we become part of the steering committee, that's part of this. I think it makes sense, it's a regional issue, is it, is it gonna be solved by this work? Perhaps not, but I think it will help inform us about our community, how we fit into the region, and perhaps some approaches to addressing workforce housing, affordable housing. Dave and I had a discussion earlier about this, this workforce housing, housing in the middle is becoming more of a, more of a topic. Affordable housing, capital A, affordable housing has always been out there as an issue, but this issue of workforce housing and housing in the middle, something Sean referred to in his presentation, is something that is getting a lot of conversation going. What the approaches are, that's really one of the things hopefully the study will help us with, so we'll recommend your approval of the ordinance as read.
Any idea how many committees are part of the steering committee?
You know, I think, I think there's probably a handful, Chris. I know all of the Morpsey communities will be part of it, those that are participating, I think, are Whitehall, I think Dublin, I don't know if Marysville has, but I can find out.
I'm just curious.
Yes.
And who from the city would be put on the steering committee?
I would recommend probably Dave to be on there. Obviously, Kent and I both serve on the Morpsey Board, but we would, I think it makes sense to have the chief planning official as part of that, because I think he can help inform them about the work that we're doing in ways where...
Make a motion to suspend the rules requiring three readings in ordinance nineteen thirty-nine?
Second.
Question by Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Schaefer. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes, motion carries.
Okay, item twelve is consideration of resolution number nineteen dash thirty-four. Elena, if you'll please read this on the record.
Resolution number nineteen dash thirty-four, a resolution accepting negotiated changes to the Fraternal Order of Police Patrol and Supervisors' Agreements with the City of Delaware.
Mr. Schellmann?
Madam Mayor, members of council, this is up for a first reading. As you'll recall in our prior discussions on our readings guidelines, we do try to go at least two readings, preferably three, especially when we're not in the situation where we're gonna have to go retroactive and pay. In this case, while the contract is, has expired, I think at the end of June, their contract is scheduled such that their pay doesn't take effect until January, so we're not in a rush situation. Furthermore, they have to have a similar vote to vote to ratify, may have not had that yet, we usually wait at least until they do. With that said, at this first reading, I'll let you know the main change in this contract is a wage package of three, three, and three over the three years of the contract. Other than that, some cleanup things, which I tried to detail in the fact sheet for you, but I'd be happy to answer any questions. But again, at least we would recommend going to the next meeting because they have not voted yet.
Any questions? Mr. Schellmann? Okay, go to another reading then. Item thirteen is consideration of ordinance number nineteen dash forty-three. Elena, if you'll please read this on the record.
Ordinance number nineteen dash forty-three, an ordinance for stronghold construction approving of combined preliminary and final development plan for stronghold industrial park located at thirteen twenty-seven London Road on approximately six point two acres, Zoned M2, General Manufacturing District.
Mr. Hoplin?
Madam Mayor, members of council, this is for combined preliminary and final development plan, as read by the clerk. The site is on London Road, just north of Pittsburgh. It's on a little over six acres of ground and sits quite a bit off London Road, although you can see the frontage from London. It is Zoned M2, this is our heavy manufacturing or general manufacturing district. You can also see the airport overlay, that's this dashed line, and most of the site is within the airport overlay district, which essentially requires some additional height requirements and non-residential use requirements as well. Aerial photograph, should we need to refer to it, I would just highlight for you the creek in the middle of the site, the existing home, approximately eight hundred feet or so down the driveway off London Road. Johnson Drive is just off the map here, this is the data bus facility and a vacant lot, just to orient you. I know this is hard to see at the scale and in parts because it's a big site and everything's clustered in the south part of the site, it's probably easier to see on your screens and your packet. But again, London Road, the long driveway, the apron here will be reconfigured and the driveway reconfigured a bit to allow, ensure that semi-trucks can come in and out of this facility. There are no semi-trucks per se proposed for the facility, but just to make the apron a little bit wider and add a little bit better angle to London Road for this industrial site makes sense. The driveway itself would be widened to twenty-four foot, feet wide and end in about a twenty-eight space parking lot, a gravel lay-down area. And I'll zoom in here for you a little bit more, maybe easier to see. A proposed pond here, the existing home, which would be retained, they have a tenant in there, somebody living in there now, it would be a pre-existing non-conforming use, that's what it is today. The applicant seeks to keep that as long as possible, and by code, that's allowed unless abandoned for over a year. But in any case, here's the parking lot, an additional fire lane, the proposed ten thousand square foot office warehouse building, a proposed storage building at about thirty-six hundred square feet, the lay-down area, which would be gravel and a dust of service as approved by the city engineer. And just off of here, you can see the connection through the data bus property of an emergency-only access drive. This is something we've talked about with a number of property, potential property owners that have come forward to try to get two means in and out of this property for emergency services, the Chris Jones test, if you will. So I think we talked about that last meeting. So the buildings themselves would be metal buildings with the metal roof, not inconsistent with many other buildings in our industrial area. These are gonna be so far off the road and so fully buffered by trees around them that you really will not see them particularly unless you come up to driveway and really see, take a look at the buildings. This is a view of the storage building as well. One other note, there's a proposed approximately forty-nine foot tower on the site, in the southeast corner of the site. And I'll let the applicant talk a little bit more about his business, but basically they're a large diameter driller and they drill for towers and sell towers and all sorts of things, and so this is a training tower for them, but they've also offered with our fire department to allow them to conduct the training on towers and also in confined spaces and things like that, which is obviously, I think, welcomed by our fire department. They can work that out should the project move forward, but we appreciate the partnership in that regard. Also appreciate the, I think, the estimated million-dollar payroll with this particular project that will be brought to a site that is a single-family house at the current time in our industrial district. Your planning commission did recommend unanimous approval, with one abstention. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
You didn't talk about the big tree.
The big tree?
The big trees is gonna stay, come on, that's exciting to me.
Okay. What would you like to...
Just all those trees that surround it, that huge tree is going to stay.
Yes.
And I think that's really cool, but they're really gonna work around it.
Yep, they're working around this, keep those trees around the house, and of course, around the street. And that is cool.
Dave using that right there, where's the office and the outbuilding at, basically?
So the office building would be here, parking lot here, outbuilding here.
That's what I thought. Cool.
See that big tree?
I see the big tree now.
Big tree?
All right.
Big tree proposed to stay for now.
Let's say for now. Any question, any other questions? Would the applicant like to come board and tell us about your, your new buildings and what you do? And you have to give us your name and address again for the record, sorry.
Doug Kepfer, Thirty-Five Grace Drive, President of Stronghold Construction. Like David said, we are a large diameter driller. We drill for tower foundations, transmission lines, bridge, any type of bridge work, road slips, things like that. That's our main business, we also do some small fabricating for the tower industry. We also erect the same towers, so your transmission lines going down the freeway, you see them going up the hill, we're the guys that actually put those towers up. We also do lighting, repair work, painting, towers like, for on towers, too. Our tower crews do that.
So you got somebody who climbs above with a tower to change that light bulb?
Yes, sir.
Good lord.
On, not only self-supporters, but guides. So when the winds go on there, eight to nine feet going back and forth.
I'm gonna be nauseous now.
Are you currently relocating or expanding what?
Yes, we're moving from Powell, City of Powell, up to Dover.
That's where I'd like to hear.
This is just a better site, bigger, it's better accessible?
Larger, yes, our bigger lay-down yard, our equipment is, some of the drills are fairly large, and when we bring them into service, we have to have the room in Powell's, we don't have the room there, we have about two acres there.
Better city, come on.
So the storage units are all associated with your business, they're not separate, you're not...
Yeah, everything that's being, is just my stuff, yes.
Okay.
How many employees?
We have about nineteen.
Okay, that's awesome.
And what about the front of the site, Dave? Is that, any plans for that at this point? Is that all?
At this time, no, we don't have anything.
Some part of our planning work with the applicant, I think the front of the site was intentionally left vacant for potential future expansion or another business. Obviously, you have to, the creek will be between the two of those, barring some major work and permitting.
Was there any opposition at all at planning?
No, we were excited.
Okay.
Very excited. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much for coming.
I make a motion to suspend the rules requiring three readings on the ordinance nineteen forty-three?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Schaefer. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Make a motion for approval of ordinance nineteen forty-three?
Second.
Question by Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Schaefer. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes, motion carries. Good luck, welcome to Delaware.
Welcome.
Okay, it's time for ethic training.
Madam Mayor, members of council, I'd be happy to do that right now. On the other hand, if you were able to, we could just move it to after council comments and just kind of close our day with it, but I'd be happy to do it.
I thought we were doing this online.
Some of us work a full time and every single class is while I'm working and I can't do it, but he said he can do it in fifteen, twenty minutes, it's a short meeting, let's get done.
Are you saying that they don't work full-time, is that what you just said?
I'm just saying, I can't take time out of my day.
Don't you just say, some of us?
Well, some of us.
I think we all do, don't we?
It's quite a part-time job.
He does, he does.
Oh, yeah, man.
Sorry, I just can't do it online, it works in those hours, so.
Yeah, we got time to go.
We have time tonight, it's gonna take fifteen, twenty minutes. I don't know, we can, we can do the rest of it and then go back there, but nobody's leaving, right?
And while they're doing the rest of it, Dave, is there a way for me to get like a pointer and just run it from that screen, or should I sit in your chair?
It'll work from your chair.
It'll work from my chair, okay.
Okay, finance director's report.
The report through the first half of the year, I believe, was included in the packet. Keep with the general theme tonight, I don't have a whole lot to say about it. Trending quite well, right in line with where we expected. Income tax collections are up five point five percent, pretty solid. Most of our other revenue streams are as expected. Development-related fees coming in even above last year's levels, so at some point I'm gonna need Dave to project how sustainable that is in future years. Some of the expenditure accounts that are shown in the report show some pretty big drops from last year, a lot of that's, I think we had an extra pay period last year in the numbers, so it kind of distorts it a little bit, but we're right in line with most of our expenditures, too. Entertain any questions you may have?
Okay, I guess there's none, Danny. Thank you very much. Moving on to city manager's report.
Not a whole lot, we have a YMCA advisory committee meeting tomorrow with officials from the Y and Councilman Hellinger and Councilwoman Keller tomorrow afternoon, so we'll be able to report back on that. I know Ted has been spending a lot of time with them on the issues that were raised in our last council meeting, and there will be follow-up discussion about that. Ironman is this, it's this weekend, twenty, this Sunday, yours truly was not able to participate because when I went to register, it was sold out, the relays were sold out, so I get a, I get a year, I get a year off this year.
With regards to that, do we put out a, any sort of information about the road closures for that?
Yes, yes, they're required to.
And that goes out to what?
It goes out to the, actually, anybody along those routes.
No, no, are we communicating that via social media to the residents, to, are we putting it on our website, or we?
Ironman does it, and I don't believe, I believe we, we do it as well, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so we'll be pushing that up. That's this Sunday, I think they have a record, record number of athletes.
Twenty-six hundred.
Twenty-six hundred, there's a captain meeting, I think.
Thursday night.
Carolyn's handling for Thursday evening, so looking forward, looking forward to another great year. And I was at the Car Show yesterday on Saturday, it was very warm, but...
It was warm.
Good attendance, I thought, given the, given the heat.
A hundred and eleven.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
That's a good day for having a...
Since you're not participating, now we do need volunteers. Four AM, Body Market, come join me. Okay, council comments, start with Mr. Jones.
I have none, Mayor.
Mrs. Keller?
So how did the Dora go? I was out of town for the weekend and wasn't there, but...
For the Wednesday event, for the concert, it was fantastic. For Saturday, not so much, because it was too hot. People weren't drinking, they were drinking water.
Okay.
I know, I stepped in the buns later for dinner and they had zero cups go out. At their concert that night, they had Regonomics up on the hill, and I think I saw two blue cups, and that was it.
But we had no incidents of any sort during any events.
Because when we first began with the idea of it, we talked about doing it for special events only.
Right.
I was just wondering of tossing around the idea of perhaps considering doing it for, expanding that in some way, some...
You could create an, I believe you can create an entertainment district. Kyle and I were talking about that earlier, and that came up, I think, when we first started talking about this.
Right, right. If I can just piggyback on your comments, you said a couple of businesses got over me, they didn't even know it was a Dora event until right before the event, so one of the things that I'm gonna recommend is that we have a process of reaching out to all the businesses, what's said they're gonna do Dora, let them know, and then, really, they almost need signage or something upfront that says, "Take your drink to go, this is a Dora event, if we're gonna do it only for special events," because a lot of people in the crowd didn't know either, that you could do that. So it's great to have it, but people don't know that they can't...
Well, the signs are on all the corners that the city puts out, but, you know, they have an A-frame that says, "If you'd like a drink to go," or something like that.
Right, yeah, the signs are at the edge of the Dora district, but people come downtown and they walk, but most people, including a lot of businesses, didn't even realize it was a Dora event.
Right.
Because the applicant is, you know, that's the process we were talking about, there's a breakdown somewhere, maybe not notifying all of the establishments that they.
Just to make sure it worked, I take advantage of it, so.
Um, the Wednesday night event with the concert on Winter, the summer on Winter Street, it was packed, it was fabulous, and I was looking at the blue cups, and they were from Opus in the back stretch, it was from all over, so it was, it was really well, esthastas. Um, every restoration, so I think a lot of people got their drinks and came down to that event, and there is gonna be a second one, a third one, mother, August twenty-first, because that one went so well, they're gonna do one more, it's during, the school's already started, so I'm just not sure how it's gonna work, but then next year, they're gonna plan for three concerts, so on winter, so.
Excellent.
Yes.
Well, maybe we should talk about expanding that.
We should get through this summer and then hopefully get it done before next year, and whether it's this Thursday, Friday, Saturday, or Friday, Saturday, or any night, I don't know what people are thinking. We have a lot of establishments in town. Okay, anything else?
That's it, thank you.
Mr. Browning?
The, the four wards are up for election this November, and I will not be running, I've been working through some depression the last ten months, and just not doing a very good job, I can, I was telling someone earlier, I'm good at pretending, being smart and active for about two to three hours, which is about as long as these meetings go, and then after that, I'm not so good. So I, I'm gonna miss, I've got a few months to harass or whatever, but just want to let you know.
Thank you.
You will be missed, you've been a nice asset to us, thank you very much. So maybe a future date?
Maybe ten or twelve years.
Mr. Rohr?
I have nothing.
You have nothing? Mr. Hellinger?
Yes, I have a. The flags that are placed over the bike path. I think we need to have a, and I don't know if there one exists today, but we need a city policy in place to determine what can be put on city property, and the duration of it, and who puts it up, and who takes it down, and who's responsible for it. Because while we all may say, oh, great, you know, there's Old Glory, wonderful, 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 patriotic, imagine that was forty Confederate flags. Imagine that was forty Trump twenty twenty flags, imagine it was Satan is my daddy flags, whatever it is. We need to, in my opinion, that needs to be properly vetted and contained.
Where are we talking, I'm sorry, I don't know where we're talking about.
Uh, on twenty-three, the bike path, the old railroad trestle.
You're talking about the flags that our mayor put out on her own time, her own dollar, and she put out the flags of our country for the whole community to enjoy and to be proud of.
And, and like I said, that, that is fine, but if you're going to allow it, then you have to allow anything. You can't say, you can't be selective, you can't be selective on that.
The United States flag for the Fourth of July?
But it's no longer the Fourth of July either.
Okay.
Without getting into a.
I guess we'll have to agree to disagree on that.
Without getting into a debate about the flag, I, I will tell you that George is, and again, I'm not, I don't have a side on it, but George is on to something in that if city opens up property for expression, for public speech, it can't then discriminate based on the message that it likes, and so if we were to say, put up. Hey, it's kind of like our, our flag thing that we have, what's the?
Banners.
Banners, we can't say we like pro-choice banners, but we don't like anti-abortion banners, if we open it up, we have to allow all the viewpoints to come, so that's certainly a decision council can make, but if we do open up an area for expression, we then can't decide we like some forms of speech and not others, I think that's what George might be getting at.
Yes.
There are ways around certain things, so the city is allowed to speak, and we can say whatever we want, so if the city determines it wants to hang up flags, we can make that decision, and then we don't have the same problem, because now it's the city making the decision to speak, and we haven't opened it up to the public, so certainly a conversation we keep happening, hap, keep having, but I think I can help guide us with whatever council's goals are to get it in the most protected way.
And I don't think the American flag is the same thing as some other message that we're putting up there, the American flag flies from every government building in the state, in the city, in the country, I don't think the flag, the American flag is the same as putting up some other political message.
I mean, I'd make a motion that our mayor can hang the flag of our nation, that people have fought for and died anywhere at any time, if she desires to do that, because I think that that reflects our community's pride, and I would, I'm thankful that you did that, and I think that the community is thankful that you did that. That's a motion. That I just made, looking for a second from someone.
How about we think about, I mean.
Anyone?
I'm not sure that motion could do anything, so I, but I, I get your, I get your point, but I'm not sure council, well, we could figure it out.
Yeah, I just think, again, First Amendment speech, if you're gonna allow some speech, you gotta allow all of it. So, you know, and, and, you know, when you look at our banners downtown, and how the city takes care of that, there's a barrier to entry on that, in that you have to have banners that are crafted to fit on those light poles, there's, and that barrier to entry is a cost. If you're talking, I'm just gonna zip tie my message, whatever that is, on a fence for everyone to see, then there is no barrier to entry.
I would see that if she hung up a sign that said, come to my. Hot dog stand, or something, but she hung flags of the US.
But it, but, but it doesn't, and again, the, the issue is not what you're putting up, it's that if you're going to allow it for one, you have to allow it for all, you cannot be selective in your free speech.
But can't you distinguish, Darren?
Yeah, you can regulate commercial speech.
Yeah, because.
But it's, but, okay, but a Confederate flag is a commercial speech, right?
So lots of people are hanging US flags anyway.
Neither's a, whatever.
If we wanted to fly twenty-five city flags in front of our public works department.
The difference.
And the city decided that it was, we're gonna fly twenty-five city US flags in front of our public works department on our property, and that was our decision.
We, we can do that, so, so in the future, to answer Councilman Hellinger's concern and still achieve the same result, somebody, anybody could say, city, I would like to donate twenty-five flags to hang up on the bridge, are you interested in doing that? And the city could say, yes, we want to hang them up there, and if we're gonna put them up, and they could say, no, thank you, we're gonna keep our brick, then it's the city's speech, not allowing somebody else to go on there, we can needle into, there's ways of getting it done, but the difference is what George is saying is, if someone independently does it, then we have to let other people do it, if we're speaking ourselves, we're not opening up the forum for other, other people. There's, there's always ways to, to achieve what we're trying to achieve, but.
Well, I guess when, when Carolyn mentioned she was doing it, I wasn't seeing it really as Carolyn's, it was Carolyn's in her role as mayor.
As mayor.
As mayor.
And the American flag is on.
In celebrating the, the holiday, the Fourth, and putting them up, and so I guess the larger questions George points out is, you know, does that, how does that affect us from somebody else wanting to do it, but I guess I could, I could distinguish from.
Did we get any complaints?
Mrs. Jones calling up and saying, I want to go.
Yeah. I got compliment after compliment after compliment.
But isn't the bottom line that that's city property?
It's city property, I work for the city, I get a city paycheck.
City, city's the owner, can determine what goes on or what doesn't go on it. I'd say that's easily so.
I paid for the flags, I paid for the zip ties, I did it when it was very hot, I put them up, and I will go take them all back.
No, but, right, but my point is, if somebody hung up the Satan is my daddy, as you said, the city can take it down because it's our property.
Well, if we allow, that's the issue, if we have a, if we have a bulletin board, and we say, you can hang stuff up here, and three of you hang up American flags and we like it, and George comes with Satan is my daddy, we have opened up that bulletin board for expression, and we can't say we like the flag and we don't like George, because we can't take his down. So if we're gonna open it up for people to put something up, we cannot discriminate, I mean, that's a First Amendment thing, so we can leave, we can let them all go up there, or if the city wants to hang a flag.
But I'm not, I'm not just a people, I'm the mayor, and I work for the city, I get a city paycheck, so I think that's the difference here.
We didn't create a public bulletin board, Darren, we hung the American flag on city property as an official city act.
Well, that, that's my question, so I, I had nothing to do with it, I'm just trying to give you legal opinion, so what I'm saying is, if the city, as Vice Mayor Schaefer said, did decide to speak on its own and put up as an official city act, then we're speaking as the government, we don't have to allow any other flags on our flag pole.
That's right.
The, so the question is, did we act as a city official city act? I had nothing to do with it, I was at Comic Con, but if we did, we don't have a problem, if we're allowing people to, other people to do it, then we do, so we can get, we can get the answer, just, we might need to figure out how we're gonna deal with these in the future, but it's, nothing, nothing, no law is broken, you know, we're okay. I, I feel bad, I don't, I don't want you guys to think I'm, I, I just was answering the question that George posed, but I didn't, you know, everyone's mad at me. That's all.
You get, maybe to give us your advice, we're always interested in it.
Mr. Schaefer?
Couple quick things, the state passed a law allowing cities to charge a vehicle registration fee, which would generate money for roads, I suggest that we get the ball rolling on the resolution to make that happen, even though it wouldn't take effect until sometime in twenty twenty or whatever, but we might as well get across the skull, get that down, so.
Powell recently did it?
I know, Powell did it, I thought you started this a long time ago.
I did, and, and I intend to make that recommendation, it was, the question was whether it would be effective for the twenty twenty registration year or the twenty twenty-one registration year, I think the way Powell's done it, because they didn't do it before June thirtieth, it's effective for the twenty twenty-one. But yes, we will, and we will recommend it, but I do know that there was some discussion at the finance committee about this in connection with the gas tax and, you know, doing it all at once, but I think it makes sense to, to put it before city councils as soon as we can, so.
And the other thing is, Tom and I had a discussion, just trying to figure out, normally Morpsey cancels their August meeting, and we have a meeting in July, but Tom, I think I told you the wrong thing, I think they canceled their July meeting, and we have one in August.
Okay.
So there will be a Morpsey meeting coming up the second, or the fifth, or sixth, or seventh, that's all I have.
Okay. I have nothing. I'm just hurt, so let's go into ethics.
Ethics, is it ordered right now?
Well, Dave will juice me up on the screen, I'll start with my caveat.
And anyone in the audience can stay for ethics training if you'd like, if not, you're welcome to leave, thank you for coming.
Yeah, this, this is geared towards elected officials, but everyone's welcome to stay, it's, it's fun and exciting. Staff, staff does get these.
It's a rush for the doors. Can you go down there?
I, I will say, you've seen me with enough presentation, I try to be energetic and fun, my flight got in at three this morning, so I got to sleep at four, so. I'm gonna do my best, but I apologize in advance for being a little slow on the uptake. They, they do get this similar fun, so I'll try to breeze through this, nobody wants to.
Are snacks available?
I can get, if that's what it takes, I'll get some. Let's, let's burn through this, so we've discussed this before, but there are three sources of ethical considerations, the first source is the Ohio revise code and the federal code, but I can't name one time the federal code has impacted in my job here or at the state. Uh, those violations or those code restrictions have criminal penalties that come with them, so if you violate the Ohio revise code, you can get charged with, most of them are misdemeanors, but there are some felonies. Uh, the second source of ethical consideration is stuff from the city, uh, that would be our ethics policy, and then the other requirements that are restrictions that are put on by our charter, and I listed them there, we'll touch on some of them as we continue forward. The third is actually what, it has no penalties, uh, but I actually feel like it's the most important of them, and that's called the appearance of impropriety, and the appearance of impropriety is, yeah, you didn't do anything wrong, it's totally legal, and I can't do anything to you, and the ethics commission is not gonna do anything to you, but it just, you know, you have the risk of people might have a loss of faith in their elected officials or their government, so. You know, uh, we're doing a bid on a huge project for a million dollar software, and we're wearing the hat that they gave us at the presentation, we're not gonna do a hundred million dollar, a million dollar bid or whatnot for a hat, but people see the hat while the process is going on, and they might say, oh, is this person in, in cahoots with the company, so sometimes I advise, yes, you could do this, but to avoid the appearance of impropriety, I just recommend you don't. There's no penalty other than it just makes us all look bad. We are kind of in election season right now, so I, I kind of moved things out of order, because I know our time constraints might cut me off at any time, so I think the petitions for city council, Councilman Browning mentioned he's, he's not interested in going again, but they're coming up soon, so I want to let everybody know some questions here, so. Can city employees sign a city council member petition to run for office, I think you need, was it fifty for a city council member?
Twenty-five.
Twenty, oh, that's really hard to get, so can a city employee sign a city council member petition for office?
Yes, but it's not recommended.
Let's see if you're right, Chris, you are a student for the day, that is correct, there is no law prohibiting signing petitions, however, it can put employees in a difficult position, difficult position when you ask, because they, if you, if you walk up to them and say, Haley, sign my petition, and they're like, I don't really feel like it, it, it just has that weird icky feeling. So I suggest that you just not ask them to sign it, you only need twenty-five, there's plenty of other ways to get it, in a prior position, which I will not name, the person running would just come around door to door and get everybody at work.
So you're not gonna sign my petition tonight, then, is what you're saying?
And now that I live here, I don't have the excuse that I can't even sign. Um, question, can a city council member request a campaign help from a city employee, and help includes going door to door, putting a sign in the yard, giving an official endorsement, like the Showman endorsement is valuable, or something like that, can you ask for help signing from a city employee?
I can't request it, but I can prevent it if it comes naturally, or if they push me.
That's a, that's a pretty good answer, you're like my star today, so it is not explicitly prohibited. Chris, I'm like feeding him the answers, so it looks like.
Doesn't it somewhat depend on whether they're classified or unclassified?
That is true, unclassified. Classified employees have their own restrictions on what they're allowed to do and what you're asking them to do, so those are sort of the bargaining unit in the official civil service positions, but again, this goes back to my third thing, which is, even if it's me, I'm an unclassified employee, I can do whatever I want, uh, it does present a possible appearance of impropriety, and one source that Tom always mentions is ICMA Code of Ethics, where they have their own restrictions, because basically, people like Tom and I have to work with whoever gets elected, so if I were to put up, I'll use my new buddy Jones, here Jones for city council signs in my yard, and he loses, what is Jones's successor gonna think about how my service is for him? Uh, how are the people who voted for the other person gonna feel about city staff, so we try to stay out of it because we are a professional civil service, and we don't want to have that appearance, so it's not that we don't like you, it's just that we want to make sure that whoever wins can work with us, and that's why you don't see us getting involved in a lot of the judicial, local, like municipal court, and the city clerk, and things like that. Contributions, can a city council member solicit campaign donations from an employee?
Shouldn't.
Cannot, but you, but they can, it's unsolicited.
This is a long answer, no, so you guys are right, so under Ohio revise code thirty-five seventeen oh nine two, no candidate for elected office of a political subdivision can solicit a contribution from an employee of that political subdivision, whose appointing authority will be the candidate if elected, however, a member may accept voluntarily unsolicited contribution from employees, so I think Chris has like read my presentation beforehand, because he, at least he got it right as well, which is, uh, again, think about the awkward position it would put us into, if you say, hey, Darren, I'd love you to donate to my campaign, and I'm like, I don't really want to, now am I worried about my career and things like that, so, but if I love you independently and I want to write you a check, you're not gonna get in trouble for accepting it. So the, I'll just burn through these slides, we've done these before, but the Ohio Ethics Commission is sort of the overall entity of the Ohio Ethics Law, I am the city's chief ethics officer, Chris Ballard has been working under me to kind of learn the ropes as well, and he was gonna do the training, uh, last meeting when I was out of town, but although I can give you advice and tell you what I think is best, if you violate the ethics law, I don't have anything to do with it, the ethics commission is one who decides if they're gonna investigate and charge you. Now, with that said, if you've given me accurate advice, and you've relied on it, and you've done your best, and it just didn't work out that way, they're usually not gonna charge you, but if you leave out super huge details and it changes the actual facts, the, I told Darren, he said it was okay, isn't gonna get you out of jail free card either. They also have a lot of, Ethics Commission, you can look, I'm not gonna read all the slides that way, but the Ethics Commission also has training resources, opinions, a library of past decisions and recommendations they've given, which can really be a good resource to help us, guide us, what we want to do going forward. As I said, there's potential criminal liability for the state code, not for our ethics policy, let's talk a little bit about the different types of ethical pitfalls, the first is a conflict of interest, so what is a conflict of interest? A conflict of interest is an actual or potential conflict of interest, is when an employee is in a position to influence a decision, or have business dealings on behalf of the city that might result in personal gain for the employee, employee's relative, or business associate. So, you know, what is personal gain, personal gain is situations where an employee gets a job, gets a kickback, gets money, gets a promotion, gets a bonus, gets a percentage, I've always been very impressed by the number of times council members have abstained from the entire issue, because there's just a chance that if we buy from this company that supplies, that gets supplies from my company, I might ask, you know, somehow my company might get the business, and I'd rather just not deal with it, I, I'll use your name, Jones, you would do it from a, with a brick?
Yeah.
You had not, it would not have technically been a legal violation, but the appearance of impropriety, you just stepped out of the whole issue. Conflict of interest can also come in the form of gifts, gratuities, rewards, favors, so employees and council members are under the same pretunbra, cannot seek, receive, or give any gratuity in the form of compensation, entertainment, trips, gifts, favors, otherwise something of significant value, from people who seek business dealings or exchange services with the city of Delaware, now, I've asked this question a few times, because technically Delaware regulates everybody in the city, we're over them, but this is more of a vendors type thing, or someone coming before us to try to get a project approved, someone we're buying things from, someone we're maybe selling something to. So we can't accept things of significant value from them, particularly if we have a role in that decision, so if somebody in the water department takes something from someone who's selling IT equipment, and they have absolutely nothing to do with that decision, that's not the kind of thing we're talking about. Uh, and this is our ethics policy, and it also mirrors the ethics law, you, unlike our staff, also do the financial disclosure form, and I believe that form has requirements that you give out, you list certain kind of gifts, and that's a way where if something comes up down the road, we can figure out if that was disclosed properly. So what is significant value, I've used that phrase about four different slides, but what is it, so I'll let everyone else but Chris go first, because he's the star pupil so far. What would you say are some examples of gifts that have a substantial value?
Set of pin golf clubs.
I don't golf, but I very well. And I do know that pin golf clubs would definitely fit that example.
Ohio State football tickets.
Ohio State football tickets around here is the number one kind of go-to answer? Yes, that's a good one.
Trip to Vegas, fancy dinner, you've got these all in here.
Yeah, so what about, okay, so let's go to this one. What, let's talk about this. So would lunch at J. Gumbo's be something of significant value? No, lunch at J. Gumbo's is so small. When I do the, when I go to the, I go to the train, a trainer ethics presentations, they have this thing called the Bob Evans Rule. You're not going to throw a deal over a $12 dinner. Now with that said, if you go to J. Gumbo's every single day, and that adds up. But they're not concerned about that kind of thing. What about a summer job for your son? No, that would certainly be, that's substantial value. What about a squeeze ball? We talked about the promotional hat. Vendor comes in and says, hey, thanks for meeting with me, here's one of our squeeze balls with Darren Tech on that. Would that be something of significant value? No, that's not what we're talking about. So what about a trip to Dayton? So I put that in there because I used to work in Dayton. No offense to Dayton, but it's, the joke is, I don't really want to go there ever again, but-
Is that my Allison?
Yeah, it was already here, I swear. I swear. Every time I do one of these presentations, I offend somebody. I used to work there, but you would agree, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, but the point-
It's a great place to live, but you don't want to visit?
Well, you know, if I told you a trip to Florida, everyone would get it. But people are like, ah, do I really want to go to Hershey, Pennsylvania? Probably not. So it's a, yes, there is economic value to it, even though it's a place you might not think of as being awesome. Ohio State tickets was already on there. A fancy dinner, obviously, that's, if you're going to a place and they have like a $100 bottle of wine, and the bill's a hundred dollars per person, that's going to be something that has significant value. This joke was funnier when Chris was doing it, now I'm disoffended. What about a signed photo of me? Would that be something of significant value?
To me, it would be.
The first, the first question Chris got, there is no value to that, and I will give it to you freely. What about one of those cell phone screen cleaners that you get with someone's brain on at a conference or something? No. But what about a cellphone itself? Yes, so those are the kind of things that we're talking about. The Ethics Commission is not out there trying to sniff around and figure out every little thing, but they're really trying to get at these big things that might truly impact your decision. So how much can you accept as a gift? And it's multiple choice, and the screen's really blurry, or maybe my eyes are bad because I'm tired. $25, $100, $1 million, or it depends, this seems like a trick question.
It's a hundred dollars a year?
So, they're kind of all right. So the Ohio Revised Code does not give you a hard number on the substantial value. We did talk about the Bob Evans Rule, so that kind of gets you around that $25 lunch. Our ethics policy, we felt like we wanted to give people more clarity. So we put in a $75 cap, which is kind of a layer beyond the significant value, just so people know, you know you can't take more than $75 no matter what it is. Now depending on who gives the gift, the right answer could be zero. So as we talked about before, if we have a big, we're doing a, a developer's coming in here to get his big develop, his or her big development through, and he gives us all the development's hat beforehand, and we're wearing it in council meeting, that could be, that's worth almost nothing, but that could be bad. That's a appearance issue, but if we're in a procurement capability, we also don't want to have our vendors, even if it's a squeeze ball, because it makes the other vendors say, hey, that's not fair. And then finally, as I mentioned before, this is cumulative throughout the year. So everyone's always smart and trying to get out of this. So Bob Evans Rule works one or two times, but if you're going out every lunch every week, that adds up. That $75 is going to get hit. I'm not good at math, but probably after six months of weekly Bob Evans trips. Improper influence, so improper influence. We talked about the substantial nature. The other half is, these gifts have to have an improper influence on our jobs. So the hat probably doesn't have that kind of influence. That's where we can get at, if it has nothing to do with what we're doing, and it doesn't have an influence upon us. So if an IT company for some reason wants to give something to someone in our water plant, and they don't, has nothing to do with them, that might be a significant gift, but it doesn't have an improper influence on that person. We mentioned section 52 of our city charter. This is pseudo ethics, but this gets at, basically, as a council, city manager, former government, you have two employees, your employees are the city clerk and the city manager. And then everyone under the city manager is basically the decision of Tom. So council members can't direct Tom to, you're going to fire Darren, that ethics presentation was horrible. And I guess I'm glad that is in there right now. But there is a way where you are able to communicate with us. You can, basically, if you have questions, purposes of information, you're allowed to reach out and contact us, but you can't call and say, I'm going to direct you to, I don't know, raise the parking fees on my own, you know, I'm just going to do it. The proper protocol there, be like, hey, Tom, can you look into this, and then we could tell you. So basically, this limits, this basically says Tom is our boss and you're his boss. Gifts, a gift can be accepted if it's clear the gift is motivated by the giver's family or personal relationship with you rather than your position with the city. So just because someone's giving you a gift doesn't automatically make it bad. The things that the Ethics Commission does look at is the duration and the nature of that pre-existing private relationship. We're a small town, so certain people are business people, or developers, or whatever. That doesn't mean they're prohibited from being your friend. They're probably prohibited from being your friend starting the day before a big vote. But if you're, if you can demonstrate that, you know, you're friends for years before anything came up, or before you're even on council, you don't have to get rid of that friendship. Whether it's been common for you to exchange gifts before you were elected, whether the giver personally brought the gift or bought it with business funds. So if Chris and I are friends outside of work and I buy him something, and we've been doing that for years, that might not be a problem. But if I buy it from Darren Schulman Incorporated, that's not really a personal relationship, that's more of a business gift. And then whether we have given similar gifts to other city employees. So the example that came up when I was at the state was, there was a vendor who supplied IT folks on a contractual basis, and they were embedded for years. So it was almost like they were employees, but they were paid by this big contractor. And the person who ran that team was getting married, and that contractor asked if he could buy a wedding gift for him, because they were invited to the wedding, they were friends. And at that time, the Ethics Commission recommended, don't give them a gift because you're a vendor and you've never really given them a gift before. Maybe donate something to charity instead. So it's kind of a weird, you know, probably could have done it, but it's better to be safe not to. Holiday gifts, so this is something I provide to staff, but you've probably noticed it around the holidays when things come in. I put out an Ethics in the Holiday Season email. I tell our employees, don't accept cash or gifts. If someone drops off a fancy tie or something expensive, I can provide them with a letter saying, thank you so much for thinking about us, but I can't accept this. One exception we have is food or candy. We get these gift baskets or cookies. That's, again, not the type of thing that's going to sway city decisions, but we can't, I can't accept a $20 or let's say a $100 cookie basket myself, but I can take it out to the break room and share it with everybody. Also, the city can accept things, and this, I almost don't want to touch it again, but there's a difference between doing something as an individual and accepting something as a city, similar to what we touched on with the flag, which is if someone gives something to the city, and the city wants to accept it, it can do so. So let's say someone gave a first aid kit, and I said, I could take it home and it'd be mine, that would not be permissible. But if I said, you know, the city could use a first aid kit, I'm going to go put it in our supply room, city can accept gifts on behalf of itself. Outside employment, we prohibit using city of Delaware or your title, your logo, in a manner that suggests impropriety, favoritism, or bias by the city in the member. So if you have a consulting contract, if you're a consultant, you say, hey, as a city councilman, I know how to get things approved by the city, hire me to be your consultant. We don't like that because it looks like you're giving people favorable treatment based on your connections with the city. This is not just directed at council members, we do the same thing with our city staff. We don't, we don't want our concrete workers to say, hey, hire me to do your concrete sidewalk because I'm the guy who inspects the sidewalks and I know how to do the concrete the right way. Outside employment, this isn't really, ever really been an issue for council members, but it is illegal for a council member to sell goods or services to the city, except through competitive bidding. And if they don't do it through competitive bidding, there are other exceptions to the law that go through certain things you can do. You also can't use your position to get a public contract or payments from the city, and you can't have an interest in the profits of a public contract with the city. Basically, that's saying, city employees can't make money from doing business with the city. There are exceptions, and if it's something that you're interested in doing, please come talk to me because it's not a, it's better to work through it because there are, there are certain legal steps we can go through, or tests that we can do to see if it's okay. The general rule is if you're thinking about in your outside business, doing business with the city, please let us know. For example, we do title work with a certain area, but closing work a lot of times, and I think Carolyn works there, but she doesn't do our closings. We kind of wall it off for that reason, so she's not profiting from, I'm not saying she would profit, but we use that office because we bid it out and they're the ones who did it. So there is ways to make it happen, but we try to wall things off and make it as ethical as possible. Nepotism is a big one. Nepotism is probably the number one violated provision of the ethics law. Not in the city, but just in, you know, Ohio. And this basically applies to city employment, it could be full-time, it could be part-time, it could be temporary, it could be seasonal. The ethics laws don't prohibit family members of members of council from being employed by the city, but we, city employees can't authorize the employment of a family member, use the authority or influence their public position to secure the employment. And so if you, if you basically called Tom and said, hey, Tom, can you do me a favor and hook my brother, son, daughter up with a job, that's where you get in trouble. There's nothing that says they can't apply and maybe get selected. To get around this, we have a disclosure on our application that says if you're related to somebody at the city, disclose it to us. That allows me to work through and possibly wall off any issues of nepotism. So we cast sunshine on it, and then we see if it's something we can do.
What about the neighbor's kid that wants to be a lifeguard? Can they use your name as a reference?
Oh, yeah, that's not an nepotism issue. If it's your kid who wants to be a lifeguard, well, first of all, I mean, using your name as a reference would be kind of weird because it's your kid, we know, we know what you're going to say, I hope. But, yeah, being a reference is fine. So here's the definition of family member. People often think it includes any family at all, but it is a very simple list. It's your spouse, it's your children or stepchildren, and they don't have to be dependent. Siblings, parents, grandparents, grandchildren, and then any person related by blood or marriage that's living in the household. So if you do have a third cousin who is living in your house and they're kind of crashing with you for a while, I'm guessing that's because you would have an interest in getting them a job so they can move out. But that person would be covered by family member as well. Authorizing employment, basically, that person can't make the final call as to whether a family member should be hired. So per our charter, the city manager is the one with the hiring authority. So Tom is the one who's really kind of in the hot seat on, he appoints everybody. So unfortunately for him, is, I don't think his kids have ever worked here because he would be approving all their hire. Because Tom reports to you, I say on the abundance of caution, I would avoid hiring your family members because it just might look weird. But there's no ethical law against it. But again, because he's the ultimate hiring authority, and you're the ultimate hiring authority for him, it kind of looks like you might be approving in a weird way your own, own family members. And I've never heard of anybody on councils' families working for the city. But if that's something that's coming up or they want to apply, let's disclose it, work through the issues. It's not a don't do it, it's a bring it to our attention, DAS, and we can work through it. Securing employment, a lot of people think, well, if I don't sign a form, I didn't secure that employment. Securing employment could simply be discussing, recommending, picking up the phone, saying, Tom, do me a solid. Tom, I think would be really great, my son would be a really great addition to your team. All those informal things can also be securing employment, and you should stay away from. Anti-solicitation policy, I've never seen anybody do this, but when we're at work, you shouldn't come in and say, hey, I'm selling Tupperware, would you like to buy my Tupperware, Darren at your desk? It's more, this is more important for city employees. We have a limited, we have charity, combined charitable campaign essentially through United Way, and we have a pin drive in the holiday season. This is to prevent everybody in the whole city from coming up with every thing that every charity might want, always bothering everybody. I'll keep going here. Okay, so examples of prohibited activities during work hours, this is mostly by city staff because you're not here that often, but these are doing these raffles, charity drives, trips, sports pools, cosmetic jewelry sales, bake sales, food vending, that sort of thing. City-sponsored events are allowed. That would be the United Way campaign, pin, things like that, clothing drives that we operate. Financial disclosure requirements, we talked about, you're pretty good at that because if you don't fill your financial disclosure requirement, the city gets a fine and they notify us. And in my, ooh, now, eight years here, I've never gotten one, so that's very good on the council members past and present. I think you've been doing well on this, so I won't dwell on the disclosure forms, but there are things you have to disclose. I think this is nearing the end here. As I said, I'm the chief ethics officer, I can give you advice, I can give you a written opinion. I can also contact the Ethics Commission for advisory opinion. So sometimes I get stumped, and I say, let's just write them and see what they'll do, what they say, because they're the final straw. That is the ethics website. As I said, there's a lot of resources there for opinion and information sheets. You're welcome to play on there if you want, but if you just ask me, I'm happy to dig into it. I'll often write you an email, the way I do it, as I say, based on these facts that you've presented. Here are some opinions, here's what I think. That kind of protects both of us because if you left out that the trip was to Florida, and I thought it was to Dayton or something, that might change certain things. So, no offense on Dayton. More resources, Ethics Commission. Final thing I'll throw out, if you, as the ethics officer, you can contact me to make an ethics complaint. If you're like, hey, I think something bad is going on, it can be anonymous. And by that, I mean if you tell me something, and I know it's you, I won't reveal that source, so you can be honest with me. Or if you don't even want to tell me, I accept ethics reports or complaints or things without a name on it. It sometimes helps to know who you are so I can follow up and ask questions like, what did you mean? But you don't have to disclose your identity, I will still investigate them to the best of my ability. And that could be me investigating it, it could be sending it up to the Ethics Commission and giving them the information. When I was at the state, I got an email from, I'll never forget it, it was someoneyouknow@yahoo.com, and it told me to check this guy's upper right-hand drawer. I had no idea why, and I couldn't email him back because I didn't, wasn't a really email address. And I did check his drawer, and I guess it was a bunch of uncashed checks for like three years worth of checks that he hadn't cashed. So it got, it turned into a big thing, but thanks to someone you know, you know, we did look into it. Are there any questions? I did not check my time, but no one yawned, so I think we did okay. And I only offended Chris. Well, thank you. I know it's not the most fun thing, but we try to do ethics and public records training every year. It's one of the things the auditor looks at. Just so you know, Chris or I also go to the big ethics training, it's three hours every year on behalf of the city, but it doesn't do anybody any good if I learn the information and don't share it with council.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Postion to adjourn?
So moved.
We are adjourned at 8:46.